First thing, call to order and pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilmember Carol Marks to do the pledge of allegiance. We'll ask you all to stand and please remain standing for the invocation after.
I salute and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Malcolm.
I'm Pastor Malcolm McPhail from New Hope Community Church, and I'm reminded of an ancient proverb that says there is wisdom in a multitude of counsel. And the beauty of the American experiment is that we do have multiple counsel that serve our city. And I want to say thank you for your counsel. Thank you for your wisdom. And the sharing of ideas and opinions and ideologies are all so vital and important to our community. So we thank you for that. And may the wisdom and the guidance of God guide each and every one of you as you continue working in your roles as our council members. And the community is part of that as too. It's not just counsel. It's the community's input. It's the community's involvement. And so with that, can I pray for you? Let's bow our heads. Lord, thank you for the wisdom and counsel that comes from you. I ask that you'll grant that to our city council members in every decision that's made. I pray you'll give fresh ideas and fresh wisdom from the city council as well as from the community at large. As we are all in this together, we are truly one nation under God, one city, one community under God. I pray for our first responders, God, that you will keep them safe and that they will return home at the end of each shift and that, Lord, you will keep your hand upon the city of Gilroy and guard it from evil and may there be peace within our gates. We trust you and we thank you for this opportunity. Amen. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor McPhail. Next, item 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting of the Agenda. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda was posted on Friday, January 24th at 4:43 PM. Moving on to roll call, Councilmember Brocko.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here.
Moving on, orders of the day, we have none. Moving on to items number 1.7, Employee Introductions. We have some new employee introductions today. Someone asked Captain Luke Powell to come up and introduce Mateo Martinez, Kayla Puga, and Joel Goldstein, excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the community. It is my pleasure to introduce four new members to the City of Gilroy team. Sorry. Is there a button?
You're too tall.
Sorry. Is that better? I see lights. Okay. Thank you. Okay, first up will be Police Officer Ashley Galian. Ashley started with the city on January 21st. Prior to joining the Gilroy Police Department, Ashley gained valuable law enforcement experience with the San Jose Police Department where she served as a community service officer for five years. She then became a police officer with the city of Piedmont and attended the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Academy. Ashley served the city of Piedmont for about one and a half years. She graduated from Granum High School and attended classes at San Jose State University before completing her degree through Southern New Hampshire University in 2023. Ashley holds a bachelor's degree in psychology, further strengthening her understanding of human behavior, communication, and mental health. Her hobbies include spending quality time with family and friends. She finds relaxation and peace near bodies of water, whether it's a lake or the ocean. She enjoys reading and finding new shows to watch with her husband of four years, Matt. She is also passionate about maintaining an active lifestyle, regularly working out to stay fit. Ashley comes from a very close-knit family. She has an older brother, Daniel, and her parents Mark and Kathy have always been her biggest cheerleaders. Matt and her family have always pushed her and supported her in all of her dreams. Please help me welcome Ashley Galian to the City of Gilroy.
All right, bear with me. I'm a little nervous for public speaking, but I first want to thank you all for having me here tonight, for giving me this amazing opportunity to serve the city of Gilroy. I do not take this lightly. I plan to work as hard as I possibly can to make you guys all proud and to really show that I'm the right person to be here. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next will be Public Safety Communicator, John Goldstein. John started with the city on January 6th. John worked in retail and customer service for most of his life. He started at Men's Warehouse in early 19... I'm sorry, 19... 2010. After six years of employment, he moved on to Lennar Homes as a customer service representative. There, he worked directly with homeowners, completed walkthrough tours, and checks of new home developments. Prior to coming to work with the Gilroy Police Department, he worked at San Jose's San Jose Behavior Health as a Behavior Health Associate. He worked alongside patients directly and helped create a safe and therapeutic environment for them. He moved around a bit throughout South Bay through grade school, but graduated from San Bonita High School in 2008. He attended San Jose State University from 2008 to 2009. He hopes to finish his education and obtain his degree in the future. Hobbies include travel, travel all over the world to experience different foods and cultures. He likes Europe because of its historical significance and monuments. He enjoys working out, watching sports. Go 49ers? Okay. Cooking, hanging out with family. He has an extensive family with members all across the globe, from Africa, the Middle East, Europe, and here in the United States. He has eight younger brothers and one younger sister. He has... He and his girlfriend feel very lucky to have a one-year-old daughter together. He loves her very much and is amazed to watch her grow in front of his eyes. Please help me welcome John Goldstein to the City of Gilroy.
Very appreciative of the opportunity to come work here. I've had my family in law enforcement for a very long time, so I know it makes them proud also that we're here today, that I'm here today. Having my family along for the journey, it's amazing, and I can't wait to be here for a long time and help everybody out. So thank you.
All right, next up will be Police Cadet Mateo Martinez. Mateo started with the city on January 7th. This will be Mateo's first professional job experience, and he has not worked in this type of setting prior to this position. He is the youngest member in his family of four. He is a graduate of Gilroy High School. He obtained his associate's degree in administration of justice from Gavlin College and is currently enrolled at San Diego State University with a criminal justice major. Mateo enjoys watching and playing sports, mainly basketball, is a huge movie fanatic and tries to watch one movie per day. Please will help me welcome Mateo Martinez to the City of Gilroy.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for having me here. I'm very excited for this opportunity. As was stated, this is my first professional experience, so I'm very grateful and very excited that it's with the city that I grew up in, and I plan to come every day with a positive attitude and try to contribute to both my community and our department. Thank you guys for having me.
All right, finally, the final introduction tonight will be Police Cadet Kayla Puga. Kayla's date of hire was January 7th. Kayla started working at the age of 16 at the Adidas outlet here in Gilroy. She has worked as a host at Yoked Extreme Breakfast in Morgan Hill and front desk associate at Valley Fitness Gym. Kayla became a membership advisor and group trainer at Anytime Fitness in Gilroy and has been there for... was there for two years. Kayla graduated from Christopher High School in 2022, attended community college at Cabrillo College where she played for the women's soccer team and received her A.A. degree in political science. Her hobbies include soccer, which she played since she could walk. She played competitive at the age of 14 for local competitive teams such as Morgan Hill Toros, Gilroy Aducs, and Christopher High School. During her senior year at Christopher High, her team won CCS and NorCal state championships. During her first year at Cabrillo, her soccer team became league champions. She is the first graduate... I'm sorry, she is the first granddaughter on both sides of her family. She has two beautiful, hard-working parents that she loves and cherishes. She has two young siblings, a sister who is 17 and a brother who is 14. Please help me welcome Kayla Puga to the City of Gilroy.
Well, first, I'm honored to be introduced as one of the new police cadets. I am extremely thankful for the opportunity to serve our community and learn from such experienced professionals. I am extremely excited to be working here for the community that I grew up in, and I plan to come here and work hard every day and stay here for the long term. So once again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next item, we have another employee introduction, and Rochelle Bedell will be introducing Marilyn Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have Marilyn Cruz here with me. Marilyn has been a valued part of our City of Gilroy team in a part-time capacity for over five years and has now joined our team in a full-time position as the city's community engagement coordinator. Marilyn brings years of communications experience specializing in digital marketing, community outreach, and event coordination. During her time as a communications assistant here at the City of Gilroy, she's managed our social media platforms, led bilingual outreach efforts, and supported various city initiatives and events. A proud resident of Gilroy, Marilyn is passionate about fostering relationships and creating opportunities for the community to thrive. Outside of work, she enjoys traveling, spending time with her family, and walking her miniature schnauzer, Jazzy. Please join me in welcoming Marilyn to the City of Gilroy in this new role.
Thank you, Rochelle. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to serve my community in this new role. It's an honor to work alongside such a dedicated team of our city staff, and I'm excited to support initiatives that will not only help our community thrive, but will also lead to meaningful and positive outcomes. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're moving on to item number two, and this is going to be ceremonial items of proclamations and awards, and we're going to break this up into two different groups. So the first, we're going to do some certificates of commendation, and then we're going to do some presentation and proclamations of retiring employees. And what I would like to do is, when I announce, we will have the certificates of commendation to come on up, and after we read your names and present you with the certificates, I would like you guys and your families to please return to your seats and wait. If you can, please. Then we would like to do the proclamations of the employees. And then, in two different groups, we're going to ask the group of youngsters that are getting the certificates to come up with counsel and take a photo with us here. And once you're done, we'll ask the employees, the retired employees, to come up and take a picture with counsel here. And at that time, I want you to know that we know everybody's busy and you guys have things going on in your lives. You're not required to stay after that. If you feel like you want to stay and watch council business, please do, but if not, feel free to go, and you should not feel bad if you're leaving early. So thank you very much. So next, I'll get right to it. Item 2.1, Presentation of Certificates of Commendation for Paharo River Watershed Cleanup. We'll start with Councilmember Marks and myself.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Herman Garcia to come up here and the following students, David Harrigan, Armando Delatory, Cody Decker, Charlie Woodward, Nash Johnson, and Sophia Maldonado. At one of Herman Garcia's fundraising brunches for Cheer, which stands for Coastal Habitat Education and Environmental Restoration, I was introduced to six amazing Christopher High School students who tirelessly volunteer cleaning and preserving our watershed. During our last recent storm, these students forced Herman to continue their already scheduled cleanup despite the high winds and rain. That morning, in inclement weather, they collected 5,000 pounds of garbage in Yuvus Creek. Students like these frequently get overlooked and are not recognized for their diligence in what they believe. At this time, the mayor will present them certificates of recognition from the Gilroy City Council in appreciation for all they have done and continue to do.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is read the certificates, and I will read one certificate and include all of the kids' names. So the City of Gilroy recognizes David Harrigan, Armando Delatory, Cody Decker, Charlie Woodward, Nash Johnson, and Sophia Maldonado for their outstanding volunteer work with Cheer, restoring, preserving, and protecting the Paharo River watershed, from which every South Valley resident benefits for quality drinking water. From garbage cleanup to monitoring the watershed during fish migration, these students have been devoted to steelhead trout rescue and restoration among other ecological projects. Congratulations. Thank you again very much.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, we'll move right into the retiring employee proclamations, and the first person I would like to invite up is Michael Beebe.
Okay, City Gilroy Proclamation. Whereas Michael Beebe has served on the City of Gilroy for over 24 years, whereas Michael began his law enforcement career as a reserve deputy at the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office in 1994, became a full-time deputy in 1998, and joined Gilroy PD in September 2001 as a police officer in his career. He joined the detective unit from 2003 to 2008. He held a collateral duty in the mounted unit from 2003 to 2018. And whereas Michael served on the Gilroy Police Officers Association Board as treasurer and has received many commendations from the community and outside agencies for his outstanding efforts, whereas Michael is retiring from the position of police officer and has left his legacy on one of the public service teamwork, compassion, and dedication. And whereas on February 1st, 2025, Officer Michael Beebe will retire from the City of Gilroy Police Department with a sincere gratitude and appreciation of the city council for his years of dedicated public service to our fine city. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire city council, employees, and residents of Gilroy, join in thanking Michael Beebe for his commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come.
I need to add one personal note. Most of you heard that I mentioned something about the mounted unit. Most of you, I probably assume, know that that means that Michael was the owner of the horse in the mounted unit for Gilroy Police Department. And most people know this and some people don't, but officers receive a stipend to do that, but it is a fraction of the effort that it takes to take care of a horse and livestock throughout their career while they have an animal. And I appreciate very much the officers that participate in the mounted unit because having horses in Gilroy part of the police officers is very, very important to Gilroy, and it adds to the agricultural legacy of Gilroy. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next retiring city employee is Mark Stelling, Gilroy Fire Department.
City of Gilroy Proclamation. Whereas Mark Stelling has served the City of Gilroy for 34 years, having begun his career in 1991, he served the community through dedication, compassion, and commitment to helping all in need. And whereas Mark's skill as a fire captain, acting division chief, EMT, and program manager for various station and equipment programs have helped the city prepare for and manage many emergencies over the years. And whereas Mark has made significant contributions to the city as it relates to emergency response, this unwavering service and dedication were done with the needs of the community well above his own with full knowledge of the tremendous risk to himself. And whereas Mark is retiring from the position of fire captain with a sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Gilroy City Council for his years of dedicated public service. And whereas Mark's positive impact on those he worked with and those he served will live on. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire city council, employees, and residents of Gilroy, join in thanking Mark Stelling for his commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come.
Well, if you know me, it's hard for me to make it short and sweet, but starting off, I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor Greg. Thank you. Council, thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the council, women and men and mayors that have served while I've been working for the city. Not a lot of people realize this, but I started here, and I'm going to try and not lose it, but I started here when I was 17. Worked for the Parks and Rec Department with the Summer Youth Program as a scorekeeper and an umpire through Parks and Rec until I became a full-time employee on February 4th of 1991. As you mentioned, I've served all the ranks. It has been an honor to serve with this city. You are not going to find better employees. You are not going to find a better fire department. I have worked with numerous employees in all of the different programs, Parks and Rec, streets, maintenance, police. I've got brothers now and sisters. I've got best friends for life, and I couldn't have done that without everybody. It takes a village. I'd like to thank my family for going through all the promotions, all the studying, and all the headaches that are brought home. In short, I ask you as a council and a mayor to keep that in mind. There's great employees here. Take care of them. They're going to do everything they can for this community. It's hard for me to turn this page, but I'm turning it. I'm moving on, and I want to thank everybody. And all the new employees, don't blink. Goes by in a heartbeat, and I hope you guys enjoy it as much as I did. Thank you.
Next, retiring Gilroy Fire Department, Michael Pardini.
City of Gilroy Proclamation. Whereas Michael Pardini has served the City of Gilroy for 24 years, having begun his career in 2001, he served the community through dedication, compassion, and commitment to helping all in need. And whereas Michael's skills as a fire engineer, acting captain, EMT, and apparatus program manager have helped the city prepare for and manage many emergencies over the years. And whereas Michael has made significant contributions to the city as it relates to emergency response, this unwavering service and dedication were done with the needs of this community well above his own with full knowledge of the tremendous risk to himself. And whereas Michael is retiring from the position of fire engineer with a sincere gratitude and appreciation of the City of Gilroy Council for his years of dedicated public service. And whereas Michael has left his legacy as one of public service teamwork and collaborative spirit. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire city council, employees, and residents of Gilroy, join in thanking Michael Pardini for his commitment of service and wish him well in retirement for years to come.
Mr. Mayor, Council, everyone that showed up tonight, coworkers, B-shift platoon who's running right now and can't make it. Yeah, 24 years ago, I was a new employee getting introduced, and yeah, it does go by fast. I think Mark Stelling was my captain, actually, at one point while I was on probation. He had me do a count through the logbook of how many calls we did in 2001, and we just broke 2,000 calls. We had two stations, two engines. It went from three-man engine companies to four-man engine companies. So for about 50,000, 45,000, 50,000 people, they had six guys on duty and then went to eight. Now, I think we broke 7,000 calls, and we have almost four stations right now. Lots has changed. The demand of the firefighter is so broad now, and police, and all the city workers, from fleet to parks to just everybody that in the city of Gilroy. What we have to do on a shoestring budget, we really pull together. What hasn't changed is the fire department, police, and all the other departments. We all have a whatever-it-takes attitude, whatever it takes for the customer, the customer service, whatever it takes for each other to get through whatever the problem is or whatever a family member in the city is going through. And most emergencies that we do roll on is a friend or a family member or somebody that we're working with. That's what makes this community so unique. I live in San Jose, Campbell, and all the cities blend together, but Gilroy, it's its own boundaries, and we're our own community. Gilroy is my adopted community. This is, I was saying on the way here... This is, I was saying on the way here, this is where I lived for 24 years, 10 to 15 nights, days a month. And I'm grateful for that, I'm grateful for the opportunity. I was very lucky to get hired. And when I left my last job, the owner of, it was a sales engineering company, and he says, "Mike, why do you wanna leave? You're doing so well here." And I looked at him, I said, "For the war stories. That's why I wanna be in the fire service." And I got everything that I was looking for. I, I leave with a full bucket, all the adventures I could have wanted to have, I don't need to see anymore. If you think about, I was telling the mayor on the phone, you could, you could hook me if I'm being a little, little long-winded, but you know, I, I really think Gilroy Chestnut Fire Station District is one of the most exciting places for a firefighter to work in all of Santa Clara County. That, that station alone covers Highway 101, 152, and at the time, we ran out almost a dinosaur point on accidents up there when Pacheco Pass didn't have paramedics. Cover Highway 25 out to Hollister and then all the way south down to Bedabell Road for all the, all the accidents out there. They have the community that they serve right here. There is so much variety for a firefighter and the new employees, I wish they were here. They have so much to look forward to. They're gonna get, be all kinds of adventure and satisfaction. Anyways, I'll wrap it up. Thank you very much. I've had a great time. I'm grateful and time for the next chapter. Thank you.
Okay, so let's bring up the students, please. The cheer students and council, please come on down. Rochelle will take a couple of quick photos, then we'll get to retiring employees.
I can let the council kind of tuck in behind the students in between a little bit, but not to get lost. Maybe we can have Mark and Brock both switch spaces so that you can tuck in a little bit further since you're taller. Perfect. For the student right there, I'm gonna step up. Perfect, right there. All right, I can see everyone. I'm gonna need you to speed over just a little bit more. Perfect. All right, so look here. Get this one. All right, we got you. Once you get yours ready, you step out so if you can, you can get a photo. Perfect. We'll let you get yours.
Yeah, let me get up there a little too.
Oh, yeah, you can. Here, so look here. All right, anyone else? Is that all yours? Okay. Not yet, so don't tell anyone. All right. Okay, we're gonna have you look right here. Ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna try and get you a little bit farther away. Ready? One, two, three. All right, does anyone else need a photo? No, one more right here. Herman? One more right here. All right, anyone else? You good? We're good, thank you. All right, so we'll start with this. Scott, the tall guy, oh, he's down. All right, you got yours. Okay, over here. One, two, three. Nice. Ready, one, two, three. Take it. All right, ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna take one more. One, two, three. All right, we're good. Thank you.
Excuse me, sorry, I'm blocking your way.
Or I left it behind.
Bryce got my map.
Yeah.
We're gonna move on to the next item. Item number three, council correspondence. We have none, so now we're moving on to item number four, presentations to council, 4.1. We have a presentation from the Gilroy Tennis Club and Tennis Center, and that will be done by council member Carol Marks, also president of the Gilroy Tennis Club.
I guess I don't have to introduce myself now. Okay, thank you. Bob, you wanna come up? No? I was gonna have some board members here. Gilroy Tennis, oh, this is Bob Metalblatt, he's the vice president of the tennis club. Gilroy Tennis Club was formed in 1973. Since 2009, it has had a partnership with the city of Gilroy for maintaining the tennis courts at Los Ananas Park. Throughout the years, some of the projects the tennis club has completed for the city of Gilroy are building Court Six, paid 50% of the $70,000 overlay project, purchased nets throughout the years, resurfaced the courts every four to five years, built a picnic area by Court One, purchased bleachers for Los Ananas Park as well as Christopher High, purchased wind screens and nets for Gilroy High School and nets for Gablin College. This year, we are very pleased to be gifting to the city of Gilroy three new improvement projects totaling $33,710 for the new wind screens on Courts One through Six, three shade structures which you see up there between Courts One and Two, Three and Four, Five and Six, and fence rail installation at the bottoms of Courts One through Four. Those are the wind screens that went all around the courts. The money for all these projects has come from fundraisers, USTA grants, and in-kind services. Over the years, Gilroy Tennis Club has invested approximately $280,000 into the tennis courts at Los Ananas Park. Our daily maintenance of these courts has added value to the city of Gilroy's property. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 4.2, public comment by the members of the public on items that are not on the agenda.
We have four speakers. They'll each get three minutes. The first is Cheryl Parks to be followed by Ron Kirkish.
Hello, I'm here to talk about immigration. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the Gilroy Police Force for their unwavering commitment for maintaining public safety. Your dedication, particularly in your recent publication of the immigration policy is an integral part of our community's well-being. The fear of detention and deportation could lead to unreported crime. Victims would be left without support and the community would have a false sense of security. Your commitment to public safety regardless of immigration status ensures that criminals do not feel emboldened by the lack of reporting and therefore consequences. Communities are safer when police don't, communities are safer when police don't enforce immigration because it can deter immigrants from reporting crimes. However, I am concerned about the transparency of the city's official policy rollout, specifically the initial social media proclamation by Councilman Hilton, raised questions about the community's involvement in such a crucial announcement. I know that Gilroy didn't elect a king this past November, then why did you think it was right to bypass council's representative democracy to issue broad and sweeping declarations about city policies? Your actions risk undermining the democratic process and the trust in the community in our elected officials. I know that your fellow council members didn't appoint you as their official spokesman, so why did you override the elected right to draft policy, have an educational discussion before making the announcements? Regarding the immigration policy, last week, the New York Times published a poll stating 87% of Americans supported deporting immigrants who were here illegally with criminal records with only 10% in disagreement. Given the sentiment, Hilton's statement that the Gilroy Police Department, Gilroy Fire Department, and all of our city departments will not work with ICE, cause public ire. Missing were the limitations placed upon local government agencies by our state government. The public should have been informed about California laws SB 54, AB 2792, and AB 4. This knowledge is crucial for building and understanding of our immigration policies. In the future, I hope Councilman Hilton allows policies to be introduced and discussed at city council meetings as other cities do before he makes announcements to further the citizenry, education, and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Ron Kirkish to be followed by Gary Walton.
I'm gonna follow in the same vein as Mrs. Parks in regards to this, that Mr. Hilton posted on social media saying, "The city of Gilroy will continue to provide services to all members of the public regardless of immigration status. The Gilroy Fire Police Department, Fire Department, and all our city departments will not work with US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, on enforcement, federal immigration laws." This is what he did on his own. In regards to the immigration issue our country is suffering today, Councilman Hilton posted this information regarding his own opinion on the issue, but yet made it appear that the current council had already discussed this issue, which it never has done. Councilman Zach Hilton seemed to deliberately and pompously take it upon his own choosing to mislead the public. He allowed the public to assume his current council, this current council, had discussed and agreed on this issue. He then posted this seemingly official but not legal document without ever taking into consideration, he hasn't the authority to do so. This surely demonstrates to me that Councilman Hilton has serious issues and the council as a whole needs to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Walton to be followed by our final speaker, Elias Salinas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Most of you know me, but those may not. My name is Gary Walton and I'm one of the managing partners of Gilroy Downtown Investments. We've been trying to get plans approved for a Michelin star restaurant that wants to come to downtown Gilroy since August of 23rd, 2024. Our first plan check comments from the city contractor, CSG, were received September 12th, 2024, from the plan drawn by a licensed architect and consisted of 11 pages of comments. After addressing those 11 pages of comments, our architect resubmitted the plans on October 16th and received an additional 13 pages of comments on November 26th from an entirely different plan checker who added new comments not originally part of the first 11 pages. Most of the comments are irrelevant and just make work and have nothing to do but delay the process rather than addressing real health and safety concerns which, what codes are about. In the next week, we will be submitting for the third time, will we get 15 pages of comments, 20 pages of comments, or will our Michelin star restaurant just give up trying to get approval through the city and move on? That's exactly what happened to our previous tenant that wanted to open a Vietnamese restaurant and we lost $60,000 on plans and permits on that tenant. To what end? It's a question we ask ourselves. To what end are we creating processes that stifle progress? To what end have we allowed our system to become so complex and burdensome that small business, our small businesses, our community's backbone can barely survive, let alone thrive? Why can't we expedite an application because it's good for downtown and good for the city of Gilroy? Right now, small businesses face challenges like staffing shortages, inflation, rising costs. We need, we need to make this system simple. Who benefits from this? Large corporations who have the resources to clear these hurdles. Meanwhile, the very people who bring character and vibrancy to our community are left behind. If we want a vibrant, thriving city, we need to stop back, stop back, step back and ask, to what end are we holding on to a broken system? To what end are we making it so hard for the people who care most about the community to invest in its future? And if you find yourself defending a system that isn't working, you have to ask yourself the same question, to what end? Let's break what isn't working and rebuild something that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Elias Salinas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to say how appreciative I am of all of you acknowledging the retired police officers and the fire department and acknowledging the time that they have spent in this community. And I want you to remember that when it's negotiation times with their previous colleagues on the force. One of the things that you, you do up here is you, you're great about giving accolades to the public, but yet when it comes to negotiations, you really, really type back and you try to find reasons why you don't. These men and women go out there every single day and they give themselves what none of you would ever do. So, please remember that during negotiation times, if you're gonna celebrate today the fact that they've been here for 20 or 30 years, celebrate the day that they are here for five years or six years or maybe one year, but they do deserve their contracts to be renewed. Also, one of the other things, I have no idea what Mr. Hilton put out there on social media, but I do wanna thank the city of Gilroy and the Gilroy Police Department for putting out a notice that they are acknowledging the fact that California is a sanctuary state, that they will not be enforcing or working with ICE when it comes to enforcement. There's only a certain part that they have to do, and that is if ICE comes to them and says, "We have a warrant," they show the warrant and they will cooperate. Other than that, ICE has no authority to enter any private residence and/or business without permission, and it is not within or without the voice of any of you city council members to state that publicly. And I believe that is what council member Hilton was trying to say. Whether you're here... Whether you're here legally, or whether you're here undocumented, we all have constitutional rights. There's a product out here, they're called red cards. Red cards, they're in English and in Spanish, and they actually give you exactly what undocumented and/or immigrants should know, and that is that they all have constitutional rights. They have a right to an attorney if they get pulled over. They have a right to not ask any questions, and they have a right not to open the door. That being said, all immigrants, all citizens in Gilroy, we have a large Latino population, and not one of your faces represents the Latino community. You need to go back and you need to talk to, it's been said before, you need district elections so that people can represent for the right districts. Thank you.
No more speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, reports of council members. I'm going to go down the list of different council members. Each council member serves on local and regional committees, and is at this time that they may wish to give a report on some of the committees that they're on. Councilmember Bracco?
Left in a report.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Visited, I had my first board meeting with Visit Gilroy. Really great meeting. First thing, to remind people that the Welcome Center is located in the Gilroy Premium Outlets. It continues to be Gilroy's ambassador for travelers, but it's also a favorite spot for locals to purchase Gilroy-themed gifts. Also, you can get your Gilroy Gardens tickets there. They also showed off some new things that they have there, one of which I already have, which is a nice ceramic garlic thing, so you should check it out. A lot of new things coming out here in the next few months. I'm not going to be a spoiler on it, but one thing that did happen recently is the executive director met at a trade show down south with over 40 tour companies in two days, and based on that input with those travel companies, they're working with Gilroy Wineries to develop programming that's attractive to motor coach visits and overnight stays. So, a lot of good things happening with Visit Gilroy.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I attended the Santa Clara Valley Habitat Agency Governing and Implementation Board Meeting. It was very short. It was just a recap of their 2024 budget, where it showed that they had collected 48.4 million in actual revenue with expenditures of 8 million, which was 2 million less than projected. Most of the revenue that they had in 2024 came from grants to be used for land acquisition. For the new members that are on the two boards, the executive director explained the acquisitions the agency made and went over its finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. The Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, so the Valley Transportation Policy Advisory Committee consists of one city council member from each of the 15 cities and one member from the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. The PAC ensures that all jurisdictions within the county have access to the development of VTA's policies and forward these recommendations to the VTA Board of Directors. I want to provide some stats for the VTA bus routes in Gilroy. These daily boardings increases are from November of 2024, and to these riders, I want to say thank you for riding public transit. The Rapid 568, which goes from Gilroy to San Jose, at 925 daily boardings. The Express 121 to Sunnyvale, 53. The Frequent 68, 4,434 daily boardings. The local route 84 is 89. The local route 85 has 138. And the local route 86 has 139. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, this is 13 communities in Santa Clara County that formed a joint powers authority agency named Silicon Valley Clean Energy, a local nonprofit public agency that runs a committee-owned agency. For these communities, SPC is your official electricity provider, and the Board of Directors is made up of the electeds of the each 13 communities. We work in partnership with PG&E. We buy clean electricity directly from the source, encouraging the kind of market growth and competition that results in more renewable energy and low energy generation rates. PG&E continues to deliver electricity over the existing infrastructure, maintain power lines, and provide customer service. Your bill continues to come from PG&E, with SPC's lower generation charges replacing those from PG&E. To date, SPC has committed more than 15 million to grants supporting decarbonization and resilience projects in SPC communities. Member agencies are currently developing projects in response to the 10 million in funding that was announced in 2024. Most member agencies have one or more grant projects in progress. SPC has supported 27 projects, of which nine are complete. SPC's staff continue to support member jurisdictions with ongoing projects and identify additional grant opportunities to help each community's individual decarbonization and resilience goals. And lastly, the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group. This group is an advisory group composed of officials from the 19 cities and three counties along the Caltrain Corridor. The LPMG meets monthly to provide feedback and receive updates on the Caltrain Business Plan, Caltrain Electrification Project, and the High-Speed Rail Blended System Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez, excuse me.
Yes, I went to my first sister cities, and just a couple of things that they wanted me to make sure that I helped spread the word about, that there are six sister cities, not just one. People are very familiar with Takamachi, but we actually have relationships with Angra in the Azores, Saint Clair in France, Monticelli in Italy, Tucati in Mexico, and the Republic of Palau. So, it's more than just the one city. They're working on a succession plan for their board. If the Garlic Festival has a festival this year, they look forward to hosting members from the sister cities, and they have a BUNCO fundraiser that will be held at Old City Hall on February 7th. And my apologies for being a little bit lengthy, but they do have a very exciting opportunity right now that is, has a deadline that I want to talk about, and it's the Gilroy Sister Cities Association seeks a royal court representative. And they're looking for someone to represent Gilroy in there, and I'm going to butcher this, I'm sorry, but San Jo, Joan, San Jo, if I read it, I can't say it.
San Joenius.
Festival, in our sister city of Angra, in the Azores, Portugal. So, if you are an adult female aged 18 to 24, and you live in Gilroy for at least five years, if you're a high school senior, or a college student enrolled in a local school, and you're available to travel June 18th through July 2nd, and you hold a U.S. passport, if you complete and submit a questionnaire with at least two letters of recommendation by February 10th, you could be eligible for this opportunity. And what is it? You get round-trip airfare, lodging, and meal vouchers, a custom-made formal evening gown, the opportunity to ride on the Gilroy Sister Cities Festival float, and the chance to share your experience with Gilroy Sister Cities Association upon returning. So, that's a lot of information. You can either go to the sister city's website, or you can contact me here at the city, and I will get you the information. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Okay, and I am on a few committees. I would like to report on one. I am on the Board of Directors of Gilroy Gardens, and I would like to announce that Gilroy Gardens has held elections, and they've elected a new chairman of the board. His name's Dan Harney. Some of you guys know him from this community. Dan Harney is actually a past city council member. He's the new chairman of the Gilroy Gardens nonprofit board. So if you see Dan around, give him a pat on the back, he's working really hard. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to item number six. We are going to continue some interviews for boards and commissions. Beth, is there a staff presentation?
Very short one. We are here tonight to interview those applicants that were unable to attend the January 6th meeting, and the appointments will be next Monday at the council meeting.
Thank you.
The end of my report.
All right, so I'm going to make a little announcement here first before calling folks up. So for those of you who are going to come up and tell us about yourselves, the first thing I want you to know is, like I told the other group, we have a little bit other business tonight. So if after you come up and are interviewed, don't feel free, don't feel like you have to stay for this entire meeting. It would not be held against you when it comes to this process. The other thing I want you to know is, and I want to say is, thank you for showing interest in doing this. We have, we've had an incredible amount of interest in this process of interviewing. Am I okay on the mic? Is it that? Thank you. Okay. I'll just keep talking and see if he gets that. So thank you guys for coming out. Appreciate it very much. This is, at this time, at this time, I want you to know that some of what you are doing today is what other council members did before you. They started on committees like this in Gilroy, and after two, or four, or six years, when they had more experience, they decided to run for a position on city council. So this is where it starts. The leadership of Gilroy starts right here, so we appreciate you guys coming out and doing this. So, with that being said, the first group that we're going to call up today are members of the youth, applicants for the Youth Commission. So, for those members, would you like to come on up and sit at the table? All right, we have one. Well, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, and we have your application, and just tell us a little bit about yourself.
So, I'm Dan May. I'm, I go to Montevideo Christian School in Watsonville. I own a cybersecurity company, which, so when I applied for the Youth Commission last year, I said I would start a company where I would protect, like, youth and, like, other companies from technology issues and stuff like that. And I got that up and running for the most part, and I have scanned over 1,000 government websites with, working with the Department of Homeland Security, for vulnerabilities in their website, cyber securities, and technology-sided things, and I scanned and got over 100, I mean, over 1,000, like, vulnerabilities. I've onboarded over 30 people around the world for an internship in one of my family companies. And on the Youth Commission last year, we started an opportunity fair where we got over 300 kids from around the area, and we gave them volunteer opportunities, internship, and job opportunities. And overall, that's pretty much me. Yeah.
Any questions? So I have one question. Did I, so are you a returning member of the Youth Commission? I heard you say something about last year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Dan May.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, we're going to move on to the Arts and Culture Commission. So anybody here that has applied for the Arts and Culture Commission, come on up.
Is it just me?
Looks like it.
Awesome. Yeah, my name is Stephen Porter. I've actually moved to this city when I was nine years old. My family's been here since the 40s, though, so we have long roots in this family, in this city. I was always a part of arts and culture, whether it was in high school, middle school. When I moved to Colorado, I helped with the city development for their arts and culture over there as well. And after moving back, after living there for four years, I see what other cities do and how well they take care of the culture within their city. And I think it's amazing in Gilroy, how even as, I consider a small city, we're still caring about the arts and culture and the representation that we all see around us, and I want to help be able to continue that and work with the committee to make sure that everyone within the city feels seen within their art and culture as well. That's my goal.
Wow, thank you. Any questions for Stephen? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next is the Library Commission. Are there any folks in the Library Commission who have applied here? Nope. Okay, next we'll move on to Open Government. Anybody here from Open Government? All right. Okay, moving on to Parks and Recreation Committee. Are there any additional folks here from Parks and Recreation Committee? All right. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jorge Vargas. I would like to ask for apologies for my appearance. I'm a father of four. My youngest is behind me. We just got back from San Jose. I take them every Monday and Wednesday to soccer practice in San Jose. I take them every Tuesday and Thursday to soccer practice in Hollister. And like I said, I'm the father of four. My oldest is 15. My second oldest is 13, and my third oldest, just above my son Julian, is going on 12. All four kids are in the Gilroy Unified School District. I've been here for three years now. Previously lived in Morgan Hill for about eight, and before that, I lived in San Jose for about 10 years, ever since I graduated high school from Salinas and Alasa High School. With that being said, I come from an immigrant family. We arrived here to San Jose, as a matter of fact, up in the orchards in the Almaden Valley, not too far from here, into an immigrant camp, and that's where my life as an American, Mexican-American started. And I am now 45 years old. I have my four kids here, and I have a lot of experience growing up in different communities in California. We were back and forth between a lot of places, between Indio, which is Coachella, Santa Maria, San Jose, and Salinas. And finally, like I said, I graduated from Alasa High School. I'm the proud father of four, and I would like to serve and help shape and form the future of Gilroy in a small, little aspect of REX and Parks, specifically because I feel that there is a lot of need for that. There's not a lot of facilities that I would feel, and I would feel proud about being a Gilroy citizen out here. There's a lot of other facilities, and that's one of the reasons why I take my son to other places that are better equipped to help develop kids. So if I get the chance, I would like to participate and help mold the future in Parks and REX. Any questions?
I do. What's your name again?
Jorge Vargas.
Any other questions for Jorge?
What do I do for? Oh, my, I'm a general manager for In-N-Out Burger. I've been there for 21, going on 22 years. Started when I was at San Jose State. I thought it was just going to be my summer job, but it turned into my career. It's a very awesome company, very unique. The lines are long. Don't ask me questions about that. But that has shaped me a lot as well. As an In-N-Out manager, it really teaches us to take care of the customer, and if I get to serve, I want to be able to take care of the customers. I think one of the firefighters kind of talked about that, customer service, and that's one thing that I would like to kind of say that I could bring to that aspect of Parks and REX. I want to make sure that the youth have the best service possible for the future.
Thank you. All right, Stephen?
For the Parks and REX, actually, I really want to be able to help make sure that, in my opinion, a city park, the urban center should be a heartbeat of a neighborhood. And I want to be able to make sure that everyone in Gilroy can look at their parks and be proud of it, can look at our trails, and look around, and just be proud of the environment of which we live in. And actually, I think it's, part of it, my, a lot of my family members are very into the tennis and the pickleball, and they kind of get upset when they look in Gilroy. There is a lot for the tennis, but unfortunately, they don't think there's enough for pickleball. And they do go to Morgan Hill, or they go to San Jose to play this and to continue that. So I want to kind of make sure that people don't have to go 10 miles north, 20 miles north, to make sure that they can have a great time, and we want to build upon that as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mayor, much. Thanks for your interest. Thanks a lot, both of you. Next, we're moving on to the Personnel Commission. Are there any applicants for the Personnel Commission? Come on up, please. Come on up, please. Thank you. It looks like it's yourself, so your name, please, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Catherine Cummins. I currently sit on the personnel commission. I've been on the commission since 2018. I've attended all the trainings, participated in all the meetings, served in various capacities on the commission. And so I'm applying to continue to serve the city in this capacity. I work in the public sector and familiar with all the rules and regulations that are applicable to the city as well. So I'd like to continue here.
Any questions?
What do you do for your day job?
I work for Santa Clara County. I work in the primary care department. I'm an ambulatory services manager.
You said you started on the personnel commission in 2018 and you're still currently on it continuously?
Yes. So I finished out a, I came in midterm when somebody left. And then I started my own second term for a full year, full, full four-year term. That was a lot of Fs. And then now I'm here to renew for another four-year term.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next committee we are moving on to is the physically challenged committee. Is anybody here applying for the physically challenged committee, commission? Okay, moving on to the planning commission. For those of you who are interested in the planning commission, come on up.
Hello, my name is Alex Larson. Feel too loud? Okay. Hello, everybody. My family goes back in Gilroy four generations, been here for a long time, attended all Gilroy schools. She was one of my next door neighbor teachers. I went away to, actually, I went to Gavlin College because I had some medical problems that I couldn't leave and go away to school. So I ended up there for a while and I was very successful there. I moved on to San Francisco to graduate from the California Culinary Academy. And I came back to Gilroy and opened a very successful restaurant here. Stayed in business for 10 years, retired. And now I own the Garlic Shops Rapazini Winery. And as you may or may not know, we're being taken out by the highway, so I have a lot of free time on my hands. I have 10 income properties here in town. I've had to rebuild two houses, so I'm very familiar with the process here in Gilroy. And I was also one of the owners of the Mesa Ridge property out by Gavlin. So I had extensive knowledge of what's going on in Gilroy. I have a lot of history and I'm very progressive in the way I think and how I think that the city needs to grow and expand and stay nice and concise at the same time. Do you have any questions of me? Yes, I do. I live actually geographically right in the center of Gilroy. I have four houses on one street and we've been there for 60 years. Doris Court.
What position did you take on Measure H?
I don't even know what Measure H is, but you can ask me.
The urban growth boundary line. The urban growth boundary line, it drew a boundary line around the city. So growth stayed within, it was in 2016.
That was quite a while ago. I think that Gilroy needs to do infill first and then we need to make sure that we're going to be able to expand in a concise way that we're going to be able to service everything. Water and sewer are the main things and we also have to be able to serve the citizenry once they're there because if you haven't got police and fire, you haven't got a safe
Any other questions for Alex?
All right, thank you very much.
That concludes, and I just want to put it out there in case I've missed anybody or any applicants feel like they were not called up when they should have been. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda. This is the consent calendar. I would like to pull, I would like to pull item 7.2 of the consent calendar since we're going to have a presentation on item, item 7.2. But Beth, can you give an update on the rest of the consent calendar?
Yes. On the January 6th meeting action minutes, under the closed session, I needed to correct several of the sentences. One was the council unanimously voted to go into the closed session. And then once in the closed session, council unanimously voted to stay in the closed session. Also, on the adjournment, upon adjournment to open session, the city attorney announced orally that there were no reportable action. And that's the end.
Thank you very much. So now I'm going to open the floor to any public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to items on the consent calendar?
Thank you.
If, I will close. I'm now looking for a motion. I entertain a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve items 7.1, 7.3 and 7.4 on the consent calendar. Roll call.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for pulling that item. We did want an opportunity for the council to be introduced to our new employee Maui. He doesn't have much of a resume to speak of, but the dog will serve as a, as a therapy dog that will help with our employees, victims, school resource officers, public events, other areas. And this particular animal replaces one of our previous canine animals that did different types of duties. So this is kind of a new movement in police enforcement and community engagement. And so if you could please bring up Maui and, and that way the council can meet the
Thank you for this opportunity. Really excited about this program. A lot of thanks go out to Leadership Gilroy for doing this and their point of view for our project. Mary, we've operated through the cause, she donated all her money, she's my, yeah, my trade. The San Martin Animal Shelter made all of the fees for the adoption for Maui. A lot of community involvement in this, at this point so far. And we're excited about, we have a team entering to a new frontier. We've never had a therapy dog here in this park before. And we think it's going to be an excellent opportunity to get some more positive community interaction with the park and members of our community. So we've selected Dustin Lill here. He's one of our school resource officers. So Maui will be at our building for our schools on a daily basis. In addition to that, Maui will also serve as the beginning of our department here in the city to support our employees. And Dustin Lill will be present over our community events, your department, uh, nice to meet him, uh, and actually find out. So great opportunity to get through tonight. We're excited about it.
So yeah, like have the run of this department to run around?
So he, he could technically, but I don't think Dustin would work in that way. So Dustin will keep on, he could be around the department also. So he'll make his rounds.
Oh, I would appreciate it maybe like in the six months, a year, you let us know how it's working out. Sounds pretty exciting to me.
Now, as an animal lover, I have a question. Dustin, are you going to be taking him home at night and he'll be living with you?
Yes, so when we got to him, he's been staying with me. Good. I did, my kids, it's actually, after.
Oh, no, he's darling. And then after you, and then after he retires, so to speak, will you keep him? Good, good. All right. He'll have a happy home then. All right. Thank you.
So I have a question. My understanding is the SRO assignment is a rotational assignment, is that correct? So since you have trained with him and you are partners now, will your extent, will you be extended as an SRO officer or what will happen when you?
Once COVID hit, once COVID hit, kind of start, right? So normally, usually, not until 2020. So he'll be a SRO for 2027. At that point in time, he has an opportunity to reapply, so reapply for a position or move to another unit. So he could potentially take Maui to another unit if it works at that time, or we could reapply and continue on as a SRO.
Okay. I, I just think it's a great opportunity. I mean, it's great community service, but it's also great community policing and especially when they're at the schools.
Well, we really appreciate all the work that Mary and Operation Freedom Has done to us so far. And I think in the future, if we need to do another dog, we should definitely want to be served.
Great.
So potential for expansion.
Wonderful.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I will now open the floor to public comment. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, Janet, get in there.
I just wanted to thank you all for taking the time to hear this. Taking the time to hear that tonight and to vote on this. Leadership Gilroy, the class of 2024, they took this project on. It was such a heartfelt project that we really thought the community needed. So congratulations to the class. Oh, look at this in the class. It was a very great project and I think it's very beneficial to the city and to policing and to promoting a positive interaction with the citizens and the police department. We're hoping to see one at the fire department and maybe at St. Louis Hospital as well. So it wasn't just one dog, it was three dogs. So congratulations to your class and thank you, council, for taking the time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, well, now close public comment. And I will entertain a motion of item 7.2 of approval of the donation of Maui, a training therapy dog from Leadership Gilroy, class of 2024.
I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Fugazi and a second by Council-
No, Bracco.
Bracco, sorry. I'm sorry. And a second by Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Just as a note, if some of you have the agenda, item 8.1 was pulled by staff, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We had some inconsistencies with some contract documents that were in your packet. We'd like to clean that, that up and we'll bring it back next Monday.
Are there any questions about that? Can we still open the floor for questions?
It's at the pleasure, if they want to go ahead and go through the item and not vote on it, it is agendized, or we could wait till next Monday and do all of it. It's really up to the pleasure of the council.
Counsel?
Either one.
Monday? Okay. We're only a week away from our next meeting, so we'll wait till next Monday.
Mayor Bozo, I do have one speaker who wants to speak tonight on it.
Okay.
Anne Marie McCauley?
My name is Anne Marie McCauley. And I understand she had told me that this agenda, agenda item had been moved, but I thought I would just talk about it tonight anyway, based on what I read. My comment is in regards to item 1.8.1 for Park Patrol Security Services. I do believe protecting our parks between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM is important in maintaining safety for our citizens. Based on the packet material and contract, it appears they are covering many locations and worth the value. My question is, why aren't we investing in extra security to protect our businesses? Almost every day, business owners are reporting vandalism, broken windows, arson and theft. I have watched many of them provide public, public comment in this very chamber asking for support. These businesses are the core of our economic development. Many businesses leave Gilroy because of the regular problems without city intervention. If safety is the primary purpose of city government, then, then the businesses should not be exempt from this priority. I would think the members of the downtown commission, chamber, DBA and other business associations would be interested to know that patrol security has been effective for the parks and other public places and could be effective for them as well. Based on the crime reports, it's evident that we do not have enough police officers to patrol businesses, business areas at night. At $77,817 per year, how can the city not consider this for business owners? It is far less expensive than police and prevention is less expensive than the consequences of not doing anything. Please consider adding this as an agenda item in the future and when developing the 2025 budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any more, any other action on that since we decided to wait? Okay, so, so then we will move on to item 8.2. Item 8.2 is award a contract to Apex Companies for the fiscal year 2025 installation of small trash capture devices. Project number 25 PW293 in the amount of $189,800. Approve a budget amendment. Approve a project contingency of $60,200, which is approve a total project expenditure of $250,000 for construction. And then, if needed, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 budget. Staff report? Okay, Mark, thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and community members. My name is Mark Johnson. I'm the environmental programs manager. And today, I'm bringing before you a project to award contract to Apex Companies for the installation of small trash capture devices. So let me give you a little background. The state passed the, the state trash provisions, which basically set the allowable amount of trash to be discharged to our surface waters to zero. And there's two methods of, of compliance that the city could choose to prove that we're not discharging any trash. The city chose the full, the first track, which was the full, full trash capture devices in 100% of catch basins and priority land use areas. The second track, which the city did not choose, was the full trash capture equivalent, and we didn't choose that because we didn't want our compliance open to interpretation. So this is the storm track trash capture device that we're looking to have installed. This device is certified by the state water resources control board as a full trash capture device. This device prevents the discharge of particles five millimeters in diameter and greater. The city posted this project on our website and the ARC Document Solutions Public Plan Room on November 7th. On November 17th, we opened the bids. We had three bids and we, Apex Companies was the cheapest. Here's the total bid comparison of the three companies. Apex Companies had a total base bid of $165,800 to install these trash capture devices in up to 80 catch basins. The bid additive alternative is to have the company come back and clean the trash basins once a year for two years. And that price from Apex Companies was $24,000 with a total project cost of $189,800. So with the total bid of $189,800, we're looking for rather high contingency, contingency of $60,200 because this project is the first of the kind for the city and we wanted to make sure the project was successful. Any unspent funds could be repurposed to install additional, additional trash capture devices. So the total bid plus the contingency is $250,000. We're looking to fund this from the Fund 422 Stormwater Management Fund. This project was originally budgeted in the Stormwater Development Fund, but staff felt that it was better suited to be in the Stormwater Management Fund for the scope of this project. So our recommendation is to approve the budget amendment and to award the contract to Apex, Apex Companies for fiscal year 2025 to install the small trash capture devices in the amount of $189,800. in the amount of $189,800 and approve a project contingency of $60,200 and approve a total project cost of $250,000. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Why is the contingency so high? When I first got on here, it was like 8%, and then it was 10%. What's this, about 25%?
Well, because we wanted to have the option of installing additional trash capture devices at this price because, as I'm sure you guys are aware, costs keep going up year after year.
So why don't you put that into your presentation and ask for that much money? It seems like this is just a way to get some side money that you can spend on something sometime.
Well, we'd only spend it on the installation of the trash capture devices or the maintenance of the storm drain system. We wouldn't spend it on anything else.
Well, I think on all these projects we're doing is these contingency fees are getting out of hand. You know, in my business, if I buy a new tow truck and they bid it at $220,000, that's what I pay. I don't pay a dime more. And if they misquoted it, that's on them, not on me.
So I have a question kind of related to yours a little bit. So when, have you done research with other municipalities that Apex has done this for?
They're the manufacturer of the device.
Right. But my question is, because my concern was with the high contingency as well. And so two questions was, you know, if you did, I wondered if you did research to see if other municipalities that contracted with Apex, did they need to use their contingency or were they, where they quoted? And then those, that contingency, as you put in the report, could then be rolled over for additional things? I mean, was there any research done with other municipalities that have contracted with them?
No, there was not.
Okay. So, and then the other question is, so you wouldn't know if they finished on time, given that this has a deadline, a state mandate deadline? Whether they meet the deadline or not?
The staff has a comment.
Councilmember Ramirez, let me try to assist. You don't have to approve the contingency. The only reason to approve the contingency is if you're giving us permission to install additional capture devices outside of the bid. So we have a bid amount. We have the number they're going to install. They have to do that. We're putting the contingency in that in that way, if we identify other locations to put additional capture devices, they're already out there doing the work. There's an economy of scale. Then that's another fixed cost. But this project isn't really designed to go over bid because its bid is to the lowest bidder.
Okay, so then with, it looked to me as if it was a multi-step phase to meet those goals. Would this then help us to reach those goals if we then spent, purchased additional ones?
It would get us farther ahead. And in meeting any state mandate, we struggle to meet them on time. So that's what the contingency does. It says, this project goes well and it goes smooth, and they're already out there. Let's not go back out again and bid. Let's have them do some extra work. So that would help us in the long run.
I have a question. First and foremost, the state is mandating us to do this first phase and then a second phase. How many phases? And how many of these total? And what would be, at today's dollars, that we're spending, the total amount that would have to be outlaid to meet the state's requirement?
Well, we'd have to install 500 of these devices by 2030. And at this price, I think we're looking somewhere around $2,000, $2,200 per device. So 500 times 22.
So we're gonna need about $1 million in trash capture?
Yes.
In order to meet the state's requirements?
That is correct.
And the option that we chose, option one, we are now locked into option one as compared to option two?
That is correct. In 2017, we told the State Water Resources Control Board that we chose option one.
And we can't contract for all of those now and have them installed over time at a lower rate?
We didn't budget for that.
Okay. Now, the second question I have is when I looked at the feasibility of this, it looks like they, do they catch everything? I mean, are they gonna catch my fig tree leaves and fill up those baskets pretty quickly, or?
That's why we're, the bid alternate is to have the company come and clean them out for two years.
Once a year?
Once a year.
So they're only gonna fill up once a year?
We're gonna have them cleaned out before the rainy season starts, and we're gonna hope that, this is a new program, so we're still trying to figure it out.
Okay. And so you think that twice a year they're gonna need to be cleaned out, and the city staff is gonna clean them out the rest of the time, these thousand traps?
If they need be, we'd have to have, yes, city staff clean them out. Because with this contract, Apex Company would only be coming out once a year to clean them out for two years. So if they did get full, we'd have to find another way to clean them out.
Okay.
Further questions? I'll just make a comment and echo what Councilmember Fugazi say. I think you should prepare yourself to clean them out, especially in the neighborhoods with a lot of trees. I have a feeling that they're gonna become clogged up very, very quickly. So just be prepared for that. Okay. I don't, I think your every-year clean out won't be enough in certain neighborhoods. So keep that in mind. Any further questions? No further questions? I'll open the floor to public comment.
Ron Kirkus would like to speak.
Okay.
Many years ago-
On?
Yes, many years ago, a former city manager, or city administrator, Jay Backsaw, took pride in the fact that he designed this city to be a tree city. As you know, we have a lot of leaves. And they drop. They cover our gutters, especially on rent. I mean, it's horrendous. But it's manageable because everybody kicks in and cleans them up. This seems, this issue seems to me like a problematic issue, that being a tree city, those trash receptacles will fill up pretty quickly. And I don't know enough about it, but that is a concern. Are we going to have to maintain these things once a year with all the leaves that we have on our streets because we are a tree city for Jay Backsaw? There's something wrong here, I think.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further speakers.
Okay, close the floor to public comment. Any last questions by council?
I just want to thank you for your part. Thank you.
Okay. Any comment based on the?
I just want to say I'll probably not be voting for this in looking at an alternative way to meet this requirement for the state.
Anything other with the contingency that you would have? Councilmember Bronco, that you wanted to say?
No, I'm not gonna vote for it, so.
Okay.
Now, when do you have to have this done? I mean, what's the timeline on this? Can you look at other alternatives? Because I agree with them. They're small. They're gonna fill up real fast, and then we're gonna have flooding on the streets, on the sewers.
They do have overflows. As you can see here, if they get filled up, it'll just overflow and-
And then what purpose is that serving? If it overflows, what they don't want in going out to the bay is gonna be going out to the bay, right?
That could happen, yes.
Ms. Marks, these are the devices the state is requiring us to install. If they overfill and the leaves go over, we're not on the hook for that. There's systems and there's calculations that are telling us how many of these have to go in. It's no different than our storm drains. And we clean those out once a year before the rainy season. And then there are some areas that have to require some additional attention. And there'll be many of these like this. But the alternatives, Mark, could you talk about what the alternatives are to this type of device? What other options do we have?
Street sweeping, public education. Really, it says that we have to prove whatever equivalent we choose meets this sort of device's capability of making sure that particles that are 5 millimeters in diameter or larger are not discharged into the storm drain system under normal rain conditions.
So can I ask a question? So these particular strain dorm, capture devices that we're looking at, that is what the state says we must purchase? So there are no alternatives to this type of, or a bigger one? Or?
This particular is one of the three pieces that you need to comply. And as Mark just said, street sweeping and public education. Public education will not get you there.
Right.
Street sweeping is a very, a program we do not have.
Right.
And so economically, I think we could make a good case that if we comply with the state, which is gonna cost us about $1 million, that is probably the most economical and long-term solution that we can get for meeting the law.
But he cannot go and shop for a different device, type of thing, is what I'm-
That's not what I understand. They're the only ones that manufacture this, correct?
Well, actually, we could use any of the devices that are certified by the state.
Okay.
But they all look basically the same, right?
They're all pretty similar.
Now, Jimmy, I have a question. We, I mean, I grew up here. We always had street sweeping. Why can't we go back to that program?
We gave that over to ecology. We could go back to that. Those, that could be a policy decision of the council. Vehicles, trash sweepers, things like that. That'd be a new program. But it's certainly up to the council if that's something they want to explore.
Do you think it would be cheaper?
No.
Because it's long-going.
So basically, what this is, this isn't gonna do anything. It's not gonna work. But we just do it so the state doesn't bother us. Is basically what it is, right?
I think it has some effect. Does it have complete 100%? I couldn't make that claim. But it's a law, and this is our way to comply. And if we don't comply, we'll be fined.
But I thought if the state makes a law and requires it, then they have to pay for it.
When I was a kid in this business, that's what used to happen. It used to be called 887. And whenever the state gave you a requirement, they would give you reimbursement for that at the end of the year. I haven't seen that in 15 years.
And what would happen if we told the state that this is stupid and we're not gonna do it?
They would fine us.
And?
What are fines for storm drain and noncompliance?
$10,000 per day.
Per day.
And we tell them to pound sand. Go to court with them.
That's a council decision if you-
At the city manager meetings, are there other cities complaining about this law?
Oh, this is the only law we complain about. This is a challenge in 2025 of running a city is that the majority of things you have to do are things you're being told to do. It's a lot more enjoyable when you have some options and you can work through these things. But what, as we're seeing in many other areas, this is what they're telling us to do. And if they don't, the Attorney General or whoever will fine us tens of thousands of dollars a day. It's not, it's not the best situation.
Would you guess that after we install these and they have to be cleaned out, that the next step from the state would be you're not cleaning them out enough, and we're gonna come inspect, and then we're gonna fine you? Or you're gonna have to have a program in order to clean these out in an adequate manner? Versus, again, education and the street sweepers and other side benefits that we have on a million-two in, you know, in expenditure over this time? And finally, couldn't we spend this still two, three, four years from now? I mean-
That's very likely, yes.
Okay.
This isn't something we're fighting for.
More comments, questions? Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion. Anyone want to make a motion on this?
If there is a motion to approve, I'd recommend it be two separate motions because we like to keep the budget resolutions separate. So the first motion, if someone wants to make it, would be number one, to award the contract.
Okay, I'll say it again. I'm entertaining a motion to award the contract to Apex Companies. All right. We have no motion. Okay. So we don't need to do the second one?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the record should show that no action is being taken on this item.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine. Hope I got that right. Item nine. Any public hearings? We have no public hearings. Moving on to item number 10, unfinished business. 10.1, excuse me. This is an, this is an item. There will be no action on this item, but we will hear from staff on an inclusionary housing policy update, please. Sharon?
Greetings, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. Tonight, we'll be giving you an update on the work we've done on inclusionary housing policy. So for background, Gilroy's Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, numbers for the 2023 to 2031 planning cycle is 1,773 units, with the affordability breakdown, as you see on the screen. The city's housing element includes a program to create an inclusionary housing ordinance or an affordable housing policy that's gonna help us develop housing incentives and appropriate requirements to help facilitate affordable housing production without significantly constraining housing production. In 2023, a consultant was selected. And in November 2023, together with the consultant, it did a presentation to City Council, introduction and an overview of inclusionary housing and affordable housing. In that same month, city staff and the consultant also hosted a community workshop on affordable housing. In 2024, February 2024, city staff partnered with SV at Home to host another community workshop on the foundations of affordable housing. In 2024 February, In 2024 February, um, consulting informed staff that it will be challenging under the current economic and market conditions for developments to support below-market rate units. Housing is primarily delivered by the private sector where developers have to balance their profit interests with, uh, project risks. In the current, um, market context and economic conditions, which are defined by high interest rates and high development costs, new development is pretty difficult to develop profitably. An inclusionary housing policy would negatively impact a project's financial feasibility. We wouldn't want inclusionary housing requirement to deter new developments from happening in Gilroy, uh, but we should plan for inclusionary housing policy under improved economic development conditions in the future where new housing developments would be financially feasible within inclusionary requirement. At workshops and events throughout 2023 and 2024, uh, we also had some informal conversations with affordable housing policy specialists, lists, um, such as the SV at Home Director of Policy. And they also suggested that feasibility of inclusionary housing policy is grounded in the market reality and the changing market conditions. They suggest also that improved economic conditions would be necessary to support inclusionary housing policy. So with that, staff started to seek alternative pathways to continue the work on policy development and affordable housing production. Uh, because we actively participate in regional initiatives and we continually explore affordable housing opportunities, we pivoted and refocused on this multi-jurisdictional regional effort that's called the Grand Nexus and Feasibility Study that's being conducted through the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative. In May 2024, staff began working with the collaborative on the commercial nexus study and feasibility analysis. In November 2024, we entered into an MOU with the collaborative consultant and all the jurisdictions taking part in the study. And then in December 2024, after participating further in this effort, we saw the opportunity and recognized the benefits of, um, continuing this regional effort to complete the inclusionary housing study and gain further insights on the changing economic and market conditions. So we also joined in on a residential nexus study, residential feasibility study and inclusionary analysis. Conducting these studies as part of this regional effort allows us to share data and we also benefit from, um, resource sharing and achieve some financial efficiency. The collaborative studies are projected to be completed in fall 2025. And after that, staff will be formulating, uh, the exact requirements of a policy or an ordinance and also conduct outreach, which we anticipate in the first half of 2026. Uh, so staff recommendations for council to receive the update tonight on inclusionary housing policy work. Thank you.
Questions? Questions for Sharon? No, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, public comment? I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. No public comment. Okay, moving on to item number 11, introduction of new business, 2025 city administrator performance evaluation process. Staff presentation, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the item before you tonight is, uh, as is included in, in my, um, my contract with the city is that I am to receive an annual performance. Uh, it is, it is very important that the oversight of that and that evaluation process is, it's really the cornerstone of our relationship and to see how the organization is doing and what the goals and the desires and the, uh, the, the priorities are of the council align. Um, since I have been here now almost five years, we, we do not have a formalized process for doing that evaluation. I have had performance evaluations, but they have been typically informal. And, uh, that begs the question is how exactly do you evaluate your chief executives, see if they are effective and that the organization is performing well? The timing of this comes up well because there are two things in play here. My performance evaluation is coming up again for its annual review and I'm also trying to achieve my credential manager designation from the International City and County Manager Association. And, uh, in order to get a credential designation, I have to have a formalized 360, um, evaluation process. And that 360 evaluation process was included in your packet, uh, it was included in the council packet and it evaluates, establishes 14 core evaluation areas for evaluating a chief executive. Uh, this is a best practice for what I would consider some of the cities that we look to when you, you say, have you checked with other cities? Some of the cities we check with, uh, include Palo Alto, Mountain View, Cupertino, Los Altos Hills and Santa Clara. Uh, they tend to have a considerable more resources than us, but there are certainly many things we pull from them that, um, uh, we see. And in fact, the city manager of Los Altos Hills just completed this one and received his designation from ICMA. So I'm, I'm on that path as well. Uh, there are many components, uh, for a best practice, uh, performance evaluation and it is essentially establishing an annual review process. What is that process going to be? Um, how is it done? And how is it continued throughout the year? Uh, as you know, performance doesn't just, um, get evaluated once every year. It should be evaluated all the time and it should be a two-way conversation. Uh, and that's how you get good communication and good feedback about what's going on. Uh, you should also set an annual timeframe and schedule. So the schedule should be very public to know what that occurs every year. And then, um, the other press, best practice component is the utilization of a council subcommittee and I'll talk about that a little more. In doing the best practice components, uh, the, one of the first steps is that the city administrator prepares an annual summary report, which includes issues in the organization and the city, accomplishments and goals. Uh, the council and subcommittees will, uh, create a performance evaluation form. And then that, those materials are used for questions and answers between the council. And then in some cities, they do compensation evaluation if applicable. The best practice also included in the 360 and the ICMA guidelines is the establishment of a, uh, subcommittee, but also the use of a professional facilitator who can guide the city and public through the process, which includes establishment of the formal process for the council to annually evaluate performance of the administrator and organization. And therefore that facilitator would help the council create written policies, processes and procedures for, for that program. Uh, that facilitator would also facilitate communication between the administrator, the council and stakeholders, which could include the public, nonprofits, other people that work with the city, uh, to garner feedback, uh, and facilitate that process. And lastly, that facilitator would be tasked with aligning the city's upcoming strategic planning, goal setting, adopted budget and department work plans to the performance of the city administrator, city administrator during the course of the next budget fiscal year and would, um, have that all documented for, um, all the council to see. So best practices, uh, from many of the cities that we looked at, they establish a council subcommittee, which all committees include the mayor and then two additional council members, um, and then annual review, uh, creating a performance review policy, annual scheduled timeframe, and then the city manager summary report, as I spoke of, performance evaluation forms, goal setting process and compensation analysts. So that would be the end result of everything you're doing during this time. So the recommendation this evening is the establishment of a council subcommittee, uh, with the mayor and two council members. And their goals, uh, would be to interview and select a consultant. Uh, in the staff report, I did note that the cost of this particular, um, process is typically about $15,000 and that could be the startup. And then you, it would be considerably lower going forward, uh, depending on what process, uh, the council would adopt. And, um, the committee would also report back to the entire city council on the consultant selection and the process. Uh, they would obtain feedback from community and stakeholders. And then, um, the committee would also design, uh, product process that provides actionable feedback for professional growth, which is my ICMA certification and organizational improvement. And then the subcommittee would provide a final recommendation, uh, of the performance evaluation documents to the city, the entire city council. So that is the process that I am recommending. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Jimmy, um, this certification that you're looking to get, what, what a benefit is that to the us?
Well, I, I would like to think that any professional development I do and time I invest in getting better at my job is a benefit to you. Um, so it, it looks at areas, you know, the, the program does SWOT analysis, it does personality evaluation to see how I can better align, uh, with the people I work for. Uh, so I think anytime you spend some time investing in yourself, the, the organization and community will, uh, will benefit.
And, um, will this consist of a facilitator that works with the council on, um, getting the, the, the right process? Cause you know, you know, uh, we've had a problem over the years. Nobody wanted, wants to do it. And, you know, you got seven people in a room and all seven of them have different ideas. Uh, will this facilitator herd the cats and get us all going in one direction?
That's what they're being paid for. Uh, and you're absolutely right. It is difficult for, it's difficult for two people to decide where to go to lunch, let alone, let alone seven people to decide how they want to evaluate. This person will be able to bring in examples, uh, give you some ideas of what other cities have done and then align that with what you have in mind. That's, they're completely, their job and they're independent as well. So they work for you. They don't work for me. Uh, they don't work for HR and then, um, you can guide them along that process.
Okay, uh, council, um, I don't like spending the money, but for those of us that have been here, we, we haven't done a very good job at these evaluations and, uh, I, I think it'd be a good idea to do this.
So I just have a question. Um, I'm assuming I completely support, um, uh, professional development at all levels. I'm assuming that that is a standard in the city as well, that that is encouraged through city staff. Okay. And then, um, the way I understand this is that if we get that facilitator, that it is a, um, a standard that then, you know, even two, three, five, 10 years or whatever until it's, you know, it's, it's the standard that's going to be used, um, every single time then. So, um, we don't have to mess around with it every year. A new council comes in in a couple of years. It's just standardized moving forward.
Correct. And that's the policy and procedures that they'll develop to show you like a guideline for doing it every year.
Okay. And that's, I'm assuming, uh, standard best practices in the industry.
Yes. That way everybody's aware. As, uh, council member Braco said, the process we have now is kind of, it's not documented. It's not, it's just what we feel like we should do. Uh, this will show everybody what the process is. And then the council, uh, five, 10 years from now could change it.
Right.
However, they wish.
I know just being short on the council the last two years and going through the process, Dion said, it was very hard for seven of us trying to evaluate. And so to me, I, I welcome this. And I think having the subcommittee kind of flesh it out with, uh, that person and then bringing it back to council to get the approval. That's the way to go. So I'm fully in favor of this.
I am as well. In talking to you and other people in the council, um, we shouldn't be just sitting down and pulling stuff out. I mean, when I've worked, you know, in various, um, organizations in the past, there's been a very structured set standard that is used and everyone at that level is measured the same way and, um, it's very formal. And I think that that's the best way to move forward.
I have a, a comment or half, half comment, half question. It seems to me since the relationship between, um, yourself and us is similar to the relationship as legal counsel is with us. Is this, do you believe that this format and this would be able to, we, we would be able to use that for evaluation of legal counsel as well?
I, I think it, it works for any executive, how you, how you frame it. And there are people that do all types of those things. So it could be considered.
Okay.
Question. So moving forward, after we put a policy like this together and evaluate performance, is it common or uncommon to have, uh, uh, city managers have their compensation linked and their compensation contracts linked to their performance?
Sure. It could certainly be a condition that if that's what the council wants in their policy, anything's possible at that point.
Further questions from council? Okay. Since there's no further questions, I'll open the floor to public comment.
We have one speaker, Ron Kirkish. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, when choosing this person, one of the, what I feel is very, very important is for the person that you choose to have a firm, uh, idea on how to grade morale, city employee morale. And I've, you know, how they do that, I don't know, but that's something that I think that whoever chooses this or sucks this person needs to key on. That's very important. I think morale is probably one of the worst insidious things that, uh, any agency or company can go through, military, any, uh, any, uh, business outside of, you know, semiconductor or whatever. So that would be very important for ours too. So how to grade a, an executive, uh, on issues of morale and the city, that's very, very important to me. As a matter of fact, it was a employee who was recently, uh, left the comp, the city that contacted me and brought that issue up. She feels that, uh, this is an opportunity that, uh, we use this as a way to measure morale and a city's, and, and, and an executive's performance on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay. A closed public comment. So now, um, we need to move, just, uh, I'll remind council, uh, of what we're being tasked to do here is, um, we're being asked if we would like to accept, like, accept this, but we also need to decide, um, one of the recommendations was that the mayor and two city council members were going to play a role in this. So, um, at, at this moment, as the mayor, I'm, I'm interested in doing this and I would like to see who else is interested in doing this.
Absolutely.
So moved?
Okay. So, okay. So so far we have interest from council member Ramirez and council member Klein? And any others? Sorry.
No, I thought you were asking for a motion.
Yeah, I will in a second. Okay. So now I will entertain a motion to engage and interview a consultant to establish the annual city administrators' performance and evaluation with.
Excuse me for interrupting. May I suggest that the first motion might be to appoint the committee?
Okay.
Perhaps you thought that happened, but that's.
No, I did not yet.
Okay.
No, I was gonna, I was gonna bundle it. So, um, okay. Well, I will, I will entertain a motion that, uh, myself, council member Ramirez, council member Klein will be the three members who will be on the subcommittee to engage and interview a consultant to establish the annual city administrators' performance evaluation process. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by council member Ramirez, excuse me, Fugazi and a second by council member Marx. Roll call, please.
Council member Braco?
Yes.
Council member Fugazi?
Yes.
Council member Marx?
Yes.
Council member Hilton?
Aye.
Council member Ramirez?
Yes.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Okay. So now that we have a committee, we need to, um, entertain a motion if we are going to approve the funds to engage in a consultant. So I will entertain. Well, I have a motion to engage and interview a consultant to establish the annual city administrator's performance and evaluation by council member Braco. Look for a second.
A second.
A second by council member Klein. Roll call, please.
Council member Braco?
Yes.
Council member Fugazi?
Yes.
Council member Marx?
Yes.
Council member Hilton?
Aye.
Council member Ramirez?
Yes.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0.
I'm going to assume for the record that that motion included actually what's called item two. In other words, the charge to this, uh, committee and the consultant. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
The record could just simply melt that. We don't need another motion.
It's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, before I move on to 11.2, I have made a commitment to some members on council that around eight o'clock, I will offer a five-minute break. And, um, I want to make sure.
We have just one item.
Yeah.
We could go for it.
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Let's go for it.
I made a promise.
That's okay.
Okay.
I told you it was longer.
Yeah. This could be a 45-minute item.
Then we might get up in the middle of it.
Just for fun.
Yeah. Okay. I'm on the record for offering a bathroom break, but we are going to move on to 11.2. Um, 11.2, approval and purchase of a vehicle incursion barriers. And we have staff presentation. Victoria Valencia, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council and members of the public. My name is Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager for the city of Gilroy. Here tonight presenting on agenda, item 11.2, seeking approval to purchase vehicle incursion barriers from Meridian Rapid Defense Group for a total of $295,000, uh, $295,682 and 11 cents. For some background, a vehicle incursion barrier is a physical barrier that prevents unauthorized vehicles from entering a restricted area. In order to secure events occurring on public streets, uh, these barriers are required. Historically, city staff and event organizers have utilized large vehicles and most recently concrete barriers to block vehicles, uh, access during events. And when vehicles are utilized, they must be staffed and easily movable in case of emergency. And due to staffing availability, that's not always achievable. When concrete barriers are used, cranes are needed to move them, uh, to move them in to place and move them out of place, thus leaving roads completely blocked in case of an emergency. Uh, Gilroy Police, Gilroy Fire, our planning team, building team, emergency management and public work staff were all involved in evaluating vehicle barriers for special events. And the following were considerations. The barriers must be easily movable in case of emergency. Barriers should be sufficient in strength and size to stop a large vehicle from driving into a pedestrian zone. And barriers should be easy to set up and tear down to reduce staff time. Uh, Meridian Rapid Defense Group was the only company that carried items that met the above criteria. In July 2024, Meridian brought their equipment to the city of Gilroy for a staff demonstration and review. Following this review, staff believes this equipment will meet the road closure needs of the city and provide the best protection for event attendees, staff and community overall. Pictured here are two of the Archer 1200 barricades with four-foot arrestor cables, as well as a cable cover that can allow for ADA pedestrian access. And that was just out here at the annex. So we got to see how those came in, how they can be loaded, unloaded, uh, by one person. So those cables, uh, can block off pedestrian access. They can be removed, lowered, put under those ramps, uh, to allow for pedestrian access as well. And it's all ADA approved. Uh, this allows for easy movement of the barriers, uh, with the use of a hauler, which is like a specialized dolly, uh, to move those barriers in and out of place. Unlike fixed volleys, barriers are non-lethal to the driver and minimize shrapnel spray. And they're 100% reusable after impact and have a lifetime warranty. Uh, they also don't require any maintenance, electricity, hydraulics or batteries. Uh, and we can customize them, put our logo on them, uh, do different colors and they come with all of the road closure signage needed too. The Archer Rapid Gate is designed for quick assembly, high visibility and durability in all conditions. Its versatile design expands, uh, from 10 to 14 feet and incorporates crash certified ASTM P2 rated components. Um, this is attached to the Archer 1200, uh, and will, can allow for emergency access points, uh, to be designated by PD and fire. And it's a swinging gate. And it's a swinging gate that can be operated by anybody trained to do so. The Archer Trailer Kit comes with eight of those Archer 1200 barriers, two field tow bars, an Archer hauler, arrestor cables, ADA cable protectors, one Rapid Gate, a wayfinding package, and customized trailer. This can be deployed by one person in under 10 minutes and can secure two ends of a street with four barriers deployed over two lanes. And those cables can be added, the Rapid Gate can be added to expand that coverage as well. And the trailer kit consists of everything you need to close a street and allow for pedestrian access and emergency access. Everything fits on one trailer. So one of our public works staff would just have to come and hook up the trailer and they could drive off to wherever these devices are needed. Staff is recommending council approve the purchase of two Archer Barrier Trailer Kits and two additional Rapid Gates from Meridian Rapid Defense Group for a total of $295,682.11 pursuant to Section 4.1, 4.10 Cooperative Purchases through the General Services Administration Purchasing Cooperative Program. The barriers are patented and Meridian is the sole source of these devices. Let's see. If approved, staff will move forward with placing the order. There's a lead time of approximately 45 days to receive the equipment. And once received, staff will set up training with Meridian and staff will become certified to use the devices. This concludes my presentation. I do have Captain Luke Powell here with me to assist with answering any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Victoria, does this attach to the ground?
No, they're not anchored.
What holds it in place?
Just the equipment, just the barrier.
And what size vehicle will it stop?
15,000-pound vehicle. And then when they're anchored together, that amount increases.
So if you're going to buy, so it's going back to the number of actual barriers that you have, where, you know, if we're looking at downtown, a downtown event, where would you locate those? You know, I could see where it might, you know, cover Monterey Street and maybe a couple of the side streets. But like if we have one of those large fairs that goes Fourth to Seventh, it would seem that we would still have some vulnerable entries then.
Yeah, thank you. The, the priority areas for emergency access are Monterey Road, North and South. And then typically, PD and Fire like to use Sixth Street as an alternate emergency access point. We don't have a standardized event footprint right now, so that changes per event. But typically, those are the two areas or four areas they like to access from. So we would utilize the four Rapid Gates that we're proposing at those areas. Then we could utilize either concrete barriers, water-filled cave rail, or additional things like that to secure those areas.
So you just need these in the areas where they need to have access in case of an emergency then?
Yes.
Because it's accessible?
Yep.
So traditionally, I mean, first of all, for a number of years, when I've gone to events downtown, I've been somewhat concerned because it is a very common occurrence. Unfortunately, that is happening around the world, starting with over in Europe for a number of years now. And sadly, in, in New Orleans, who, by the way, had these exact barriers and did not deploy them. And it was incredibly sad that they did not. I know that you guys have shared with me some new plans for, you know, setting things up downtown, which I think is very encouraging. I appreciate all the work on that. I also think it, it would be good to understand the staff differences because when I've gone to the events this year, you see a lot of staff who are manning these vehicles in order to provide the barriers. And I'm sure there's overtime involved. In addition to overtime being involved, once people are on overtime, then they're also more, you know, tasked for their regular job and, and all of that. Is there a financial way that you can explain to council and to people the difference that we might see in a, in a traditional event that we would do like LaFrenda or one of these other events?
Yeah, absolutely. I do have a smaller-scale event that I could show you here. And I don't know if you can really tell what that is up there. But the red areas that are closed off, that represent Lewis Street down to Sixth Street, as well as the closure of Fifth Street and Martin. And this is the typical closure for Downtown Live. And we've had other smaller, smaller events downtown that have utilized this footprint as well. So for something like this, this required four vehicles and four public work staff. And they typically have one other person who's running around rotating, giving breaks when needed. With the barriers, we anticipate that we would only have two public work staff to man the Rapid Gates. So they would be there to open and close if needed. For this first one without the barriers, the cost was estimated at about $8,580. And that was for staff time and the vehicle time. With the barriers, that cost drops down to about $3,384. So approximately $5,000 that we're saving. When you're looking at an event like Downtown Live, that's an event that happens for 10 weeks. So that's about $50,000 in savings. Something else to consider, though, is not just the cost of the overtime, but if something were to happen and one of those vehicles does get hit, there's a staff member in there, there's additional risk, additional liability that comes with that as well.
I know you're working on the special events permit, but the question is, in a fee schedule, you would probably have some sort of cost in there for barriers too, correct? And so that would help recover some of this cost we'd be putting out for it, correct? Overtime?
Yep. And that could come up as a discussion when we bring back the special event ordinance as well as the fee schedule. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Okay, if no further questions, I'll open the floor to public comment.
No public speakers.
Okay, no public speakers. Close the floor to public speakers, then I'll entertain a motion.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Fugazi to approve the purchase of vehicle incursion barrier systems for a total of $295,682.11. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 12, future council initiated agenda items. There are none. And item number 13, city administrators' report. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one update. I've been asked a couple of times about the housing development at Nathan Alexander that was supposed to be part of the county's bond measure to build affordable housing. We've been talking with the county for a couple of years about that project. The ball was in their court and they spent time putting together a request for offers from developers who could develop the property and with the financing from those bonds. And the, and just recently, the county has decided to change course and is working with the county housing authority to develop a direct partnership with them for development of the site. And so we will continue to see where the county comes up in the housing authority. But it is still on the project list and is still a viable project. It's just been with the county for some time while they try to figure out who actually develops it and builds it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Jimmy, may I ask you a question? Can you give us an update on the Glen Loma, yeah, San Teresa fire station?
That project is, I believe we are now done with escrow. And as I told you, we would start the development of that project in January, February. So that's where we are now.
Okay. Are we, do we have a contractor?
Well, no, we haven't bid it out or anything yet.
Oh, all right. When's that going to happen?
Probably in the next couple of months, once we get the design finished. But we still have no changes. We anticipate breaking ground this year. And I will keep you posted as we get a little farther along in the next month or two.
I'll take you.
I have a question. Can you just let members of the public have an update on the homeless situation at the railroad?
Sure.
On Alexander?
We've all received several inquiries and social media posts concerning the encampment that evolved on Nathan Alexander. That is Union Pacific Railroad property. The city does not have authority nor permission to clear that area. We were told that Union Pacific would start abating the area on February 23rd and 24th, but they seem to have changed their mind and started doing some of those things this weekend. The site is getting cleaner and cleaner and clearer and clearer. And apparently, they have started putting up concrete barricades as well. We don't get a lot of communication about that. We did not know they would be there this weekend. But we are still the understanding that they expect that entire abatement to be completed around February 23rd and 24th. And we will be on site that day to provide some assistance. The goal after that date is that UPRR will secure the area so that vehicles cannot return to that area.
All right. Moving on to item number 14, city attorneys' report.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I don't have a report, but I can take us into the closed session, which is the next item 15, with the mayor's permission.
Please do.
All right. Item 15 is a closed session. It's one item, conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Pending litigation pursuant to Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 6, excuse me, 54956.9 in Gilroy City Code, Section 17A113A. It's Gendolfi Investments LLC v. City of Gilroy Superior Court, Case Number 24CV444165, filed July 26, 2024. So the first thing to do now is take public comment. If anyone has a comment on this?
No public speakers.
All right. Then I advise the council pursuant to the OGO that it is my legal opinion that it would prejudice the interests of the city to discuss this matter in closed session and therefore recommend that we take a vote on going into closed session to discuss this item. So the next step is to take that vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, we can now adjourn the meeting to, adjourn the open session to the closed session. And the conclusion of the closed session will report out if there's anything to report.
Thank you.